Here.
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 Here. All the members of the Board received the minutes from the October 19th meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, motion may I say, you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is the adjourned public hearing for Gasland Petroleum Route 9D in Houstonville. Get a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Make that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion may I say, you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, motion carries. We could have the attorney wishes to describe the project real quick, go ahead.
Thank you, do you mind if I move my mask when speaking?
That's fine.
Thank you. Good evening, Nicholas Ward Willis with King &amp; Bean on behalf of the applicant Gasland Petroleum. We previously before you last month described the application, so I think people are familiar with it, so I'll be brief. It's two apartment dwellings above a convenience store with gas pumps at the gas station with the canopies, and we have our architect present who will go through in more detail. We did receive comments from the town planner and the town engineer, which we don't see as difficult, and we can satisfy those comments, and we'll submit a formal response in writing. We also did since our last appearance, we submitted on October 13th, the updated traffic study. We have Dr. Greeley here tonight who will go through that in some detail, not as much detail as last time, but he'll have the highlights. We also, and I apologize for this, we took the liberty in advance of submitting a copy to Mr. Galante, the Board's traffic consultant, so he already has a copy, but I understand this Board needs to authorize him to review that, so we would request that you do so. And again, we apologize, we sent it to him already with thinking that it would have been done, so, but he does have a copy of that. We're also waiting for comments from DOT, and we followed up with them, but they're still in the process of reviewing it. And we also note that the Board is still waiting for the 30 days to expire for circulation of lead agency, as well as the comments back from the county within their 30-day period. So while we would like to ask the town, the planning board to close the public hearing, make a secret determination, we recognize you're not in position to do so. So I would ask that you continue this public hearing until your December 7th meeting at the close of this evening's presentation. What we will be doing tonight, what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Greeley to come up and explain the traffic report, and then we have our project architect, Mike McCormick here, who'll go through with you some of the thought process that went into selecting the four alternatives that we presented to the Board, and we also have Chris Lapine from our civil engineer to answer any questions you may have regarding the project. And we would appreciate feedback from you with respect to the architectural designs that will be presented to you again tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, may I take this down?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Board, Philip Greeley, Mazer Consulting. We prepared the traffic study for the site. At the last meeting, there were several comments or questions that related to traffic conditions, accidents, speeds, information relative to operations, and we provided a submission October 6th letter, which addressed each of those items. Our traffic study had previously been forwarded to New York State DOT. There were some revisions to include accident data and other information. That was submitted to the Department of Transportation. We're still waiting for comments. What was included in the study and reflected on the revised site plan was the provision of a raised channelization island. Based on our early meetings with DOT, they indicated they wanted this site to have a right turn entry, right turn exit driveway only, connecting to Route 9D, and that is reflected on the site plans. So the areas that we provided the information on, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them. We did, as Mr. Ward Willis had indicated, forward a copy of the report to the town's traffic consultant. It's by understanding he hasn't been authorized to review it yet, so we would like to move that along so that he can provide your comments. So I don't know if the Board has any specific questions on what we submitted after last meeting.
So far, I don't know if anybody else on the Board does, but I don't have any specific questions at the present time.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Did you list any fatalities that have been within 1,000 feet of that property?
All the accidents that were reported, I believe there was one fatality that was listed. I can't tell you the exact location. We covered quite a distance north and south of the intersection, have to go through.
Do you know what the cause of that accident was, or the fatality?
I don't remember the details of it.
Will we get the details of that?
Yeah, they're in the report, but I will pull them out and get that for you. Maybe when Chris is speaking, I'll see if I can locate it, point it to the specific place. But all the recorded accidents for the last three years were identified for that entire stretch, so, you know, and all the contributing factors, whether it was a turning movement or rear ending, but I will look that up and let you know.
Okay.
Alright, okay. Val, do you have anything specific, or?
The only comment that we have specific to traffic would be concerning the channelized median that you had discussed to discourage left-hand movements.
Yes.
Our traffic department suggests that upon analysis of the turning templates, there's an issue with, although it is unlikely, a truck turning into the site conflicting with a truck waiting to exit the site. Also, the applicant should evaluate options to create a larger center median to eliminate this concern. Not a traffic engineer, but hopefully this makes more sense to you.
Well, we can take a look at that. The raised median is a mountable curb to allow vehicles to traverse that. It's unlikely that you would have a large tractor-trailer entering and exiting at the same time because there's only a fuel delivery that would be that size, but we can look at opening up the width a little bit more. The ultimate call will be with New York State DOT. But it is a raised island, but it is mountable curb to allow the vehicle to track through there, so we'll address those in future submissions.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, traffic consultant? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, good afternoon.
Good evening.
Morning somewhere. Mr. Chairman, planning board members, consultants, how are you all doing this evening? Hopefully well, as I am. We're all healthy, thank God. So my name is Michael McCormick, and I'm the architect with Liston McCormick &amp; Boris, I'm a principal. With me I have Keith Schofield, one of my associates. We're going to talk a little bit about the architecture, because one of the comments that we got back was about the architecture of the site itself and what we're doing. Just to let you know, Liston McCormick &amp; Boris has been around for about 34 years now, almost 34. We're an award-winning firm with AA awards, as well as historic preservation awards.
Just to catch it so the camera can catch it. There you go, that's good.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
So essentially, we are very well versed with the site. We have been in this area, again, for 34 years. I've been here for 61 years, which is my whole life, but that's okay. We know the site, we know it very well, we know 9D, we know Wapanger. This is where we live, this is where we are from, Duchess County. So this is our neck of the woods. So just to let you know, we did take a look at the existing buildings on the site itself, and they're in poor shape at best. They are having, there's no historic reference, there's no point of reference in terms of historic nature, there's no real structural integrity, that's really of any integrity of the property itself that is really retainable. So in terms of the buildings that you see here, they are really not of great quality, I would say, in terms of construction, nor design. So they certainly do not add to the character of the hamlet at all, in any way, shape, or form. They've been changed over years, you can see that they have changed roof lines, they have modern materials, they have things that you would not find in a historic nature in any way, shape, or form. So what we did was we looked at the buildings in the surround.
We'll get you to the other side of the podium, thank you.
I'll be surrounded.
Same, yes, exactly.
That's alright.
Alright, thank you.
So what we did as architects, we looked at the integrity of the architectural character and fabric of the area itself. So Keith looked at that and came up with an idea, and that's what you see in terms of our presentation to the Board for consideration with four ideas. So Keith will talk a little bit about what he saw when we looked and did the architectural fabric study of what you find in the area, and why we came up with what we did. Keith?
So I basically started anywhere from Ketchum Town Road and worked my way past Dean Avenue as the part of the area that I thought was most influencing this site. And I took photographs of key elements that I thought were very important to this project. And one really, right at 9D and O'Hopa Road is a building on the southeast corner, and that was kind of my basis to start taking the mass of the building. As I went further towards Ketchum Town, just past the old 7-Eleven convenience stores, there's an older colonial home that I liked, that had brackets, it had the old true divided two-over-two windows, so I thought that was kind of a nice character. And then as I got north of Old Hopeville and past, closer to Dean Avenue, you know, there was a house that had been raised up, and part of the problem with these buildings here is really the first floor below street level. So it is a low-lying area, and so when I got to this one, I was kind of intrigued that it was raised up, it had a nice brick foundation, and so that kind of led into the brick feel of going along the bottom of the building. And then further on the corner of Dean Avenue, there's an old brick building, it's painted beige at this point, but it had a nice canopy entrance with brackets that kind of supported it. So there was a series of architecture, one, you know, the biggest one, like I said, is on the southeast corner of 9D, and Old Hopeville, which had a little portico in the front, so we kept the portico feeling on the front of the building that would face Route 9D. And then as we were into the property and everything, kind of brought in the brackets for the other main entrances to the building. One, the residential side, and two, on the public side, that would be going into the store from the pump area. Again, you know, the main siding on a framed building was a clambered siding, whether it was vinyl or whatever at this point, but we carried that feeling through. Again, to go along with the cornices, we added a freeze board up at the top, and just some typical ornamental-looking window heads and everything to kind of case out the windows. So the rest of our study, you know, this was study one, it was a light color, and it was called Arctic White. We took your recommendations to try a green. This one is mossy, heather moss, and these are all James Hardy colors. The third is Navajo beige, which is a preferred color for the owner, because it's a nice cream, very neutral color. And then the fourth is a cobblestone, which picks up a very light gray. So it's a difference between, there's a beige, there's a slightly off-white gray, there's a white and a green that we've kind of explored as far as these elevations go.
So I guess to sum up, the key is that we have taken a look at the area. We did see what's in the area in terms of architectural styles and fabric. We tried to implement them into the architecture of the project. So in terms of a hard look at the project, in terms of what this would be architecturally, we've done that, and I believe we've met the requirements of SEACRA. I'm a former planning board chair for 25 years, so I know what's about SEACRA and what it means. So I believe that this certainly does meet the parameters and thresholds that are set out by SEACRA. I think right now, we're looking to you as the Board for any comments, questions, or thoughts, but I think overall, we're, I feel very confident we have met the thresholds, certainly from a SEACRA point of view, as well as the town point of view, looking at the hard look of the architectural integrity of the project.
Anybody have any questions?
We were wondering about that, what we would do, fencing or whatnot, you know, what would plans on that? Like an eight-foot fence or something that would hide, you know, any light disturbances or anything to the neighbors in the back?
Yeah, I think that, I'll let Chris Lapine.
Let's leave that for the engineer. Let's stick to the, they're looking at the architecture of the building right now. So anybody have anything specific to the architecture, what's being proposed, anything anybody wants to see?
What's the roof length on there? How wide is that building?
How wide is the roof?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how come you didn't put like small dormers or something there to break that up a little bit?
Actually, most of the roof slopes that we looked at were probably 612 or less. So we were trying to keep that, if I was to try and squeeze one in there, I think it would.
Yeah, they're not very pleasantly looking, the roof lines they had that are pre-existing. Something that can break that up a little bit, might look a little nicer.
Break up the roof line itself? We can look at that, sure.
Again, you would probably have to increase the pitch in order to kind of make something that.
But like a pop-up or something of that nature? Yeah, we can take a look at that.
On the long side or on both?
Yeah, on the long, well, I mean, you guys are designing, take a look at the whole thing all the way around, or the three sides of the view. Right now, that's just a big ugly plain jane.
Yeah, and we could put it like on the front 9D and then on the sides, yeah, we can take a look at that.
Did you guys do any renderings with gables instead of the heather?
I did not, no.
No.
Like I said, the main one that we thought stood out at that intersection was the one on the southeast corner, and it seems like it's one of the nicer maintained ones, and it kind of catches your eye as you go through that strip, I think. So that was kind of why, and it also had a lower slope.
Right. I think the side facing 9D would look nice with a gable.
And maybe that's where we implement something like a pop-up, play a gable element?
Right.
Yeah, because that would make, you know, be even on both sides, it would be equal, that'd be nice.
If you do the dormer thing, it may make sense to do the gable.
And break it up.
Plus you have the apartments upstairs, right, might help you out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think, there's two other, so I was looking on the county's website, on the parcel access, looking at some of the properties in that area that have historical, well, not historical significance, but they've been, somebody's done a report on them in years past. I think a couple of them were from Sina Hudson, a couple of the older structures. Just possibly you might want to take a look and see, just try, I can't remember which ones they were, I looked at so many things this afternoon. But that, there was two in there that are like right across the street from the property, not including the church though, because obviously it's not gonna, the church isn't going to work into the, into the architecture, but.
The white building across the street, do you hear real estate praising?
Yeah, that might have been one of them, yeah, the old re-suppraisal. I'm trying to remember what you, but there was a couple of them listed on there.
I know there's a white one that you're probably referring to, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little up towards.
Yeah, if you want to, I mean, maybe just, you know, it's something that kind of picks up those. You know, you want just whatever's within the hamlet, not worried about running down into the village, you know, all the way up to the village and everywhere else, but you know, just stuff specific to the hamlet to kind of.
At the same time, we don't want to replicate the exact thing, you know.
But we want to tie the elements together.
Key pieces, huh? You don't want to have two of the same buildings.
Right, right, no, 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 I know, but there's, but each of the buildings within there, there is a little bit of difference between them, so, you know, and that might be with, you know, some, you know, some of the comments from everybody else, it might, you know, give you a couple of different ideas.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Alright, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anything anybody else has, they'd like to bring up? How do you guys feel about the colors?
I'd like to see the whole color.
I like the whiter stuff, because everything else around there is, except for the one building you was talking about at the corner. All those old buildings are white.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I like the off-white, dark white.
About the off-white?
Yeah.
The grayish?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, have any feelings now?
Off-white.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you don't go with a stone base? Because you haven't offered that yet. You're offering the brick. Most of the basements, most of the lower half of those old structures are all stone. Maybe that would look a little bit more appealing with the stone, if you're going to go with Navajo or the white.
Yeah, if we're talking about the beige, the light beige color, maybe the stone base would look really nice.
Stone base would look better.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Again, we'll give the Board the choice and see which goes. Sounds like you're leaning towards the lighter colored one, the beige, right? So maybe we'll give you the stone base with the brick and talk about it.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
There was a couple of different ideas, I think, in what's being proposed. There are a couple of different looks, and we can go from there.
And they're both in keeping with the idea, this architectural fabric of the area, they certainly worked all that together very well.
Yeah. And obviously, whatever gets carried into the building, we're going to kind of try to carry some of that into the canopy also.
Yeah, yeah, we'd replicate that for sure.
Okay, just making sure I.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be the next question.
Exactly.
We could show it.
No, I know on the original it was, yeah, so I just want to.
It'd have to match, you don't forget.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't do that to you.
Alright, yeah. Okay. Alright, if anybody has anything else, I guess we'll move on to.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thank you.
Thank you. And have a great evening, vote.
Huh?
Got to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Christopher Lapine with the Chasing Companies. During LMV's architectural presentation, there was a reference to the need for some fencing on the site, and maybe if we can get into a little bit more detail as to where your preference is for that fencing?
To screen you away from all the houses adjacent to that property.
So along the western side of the property?
Other houses?
Yeah.
On the hallway around it?
Yeah. Is there a stockade fence to the west of that? Would you want fencing on top of fencing?
We want an eight-foot-high fence to screen all the housing that's around that property.
So regardless, are there existing fences, just continue to maintain your high fence?
All around the property. Can't do eight, right? Oh, yeah, okay.
Do you want the fencing to extend to that where we're not interrupting any vegetation and the trees on the property? How would you like us to, kind of on the eastern side?
Just grab the, grab the mic off of there.
On the eastern side of the property where we're maintaining the vegetation adjoining the properties, the trees and everything, would you want a fencing on the opposite side of those trees, or would you like it along the property line where we remove some?
Why don't you show us on the map, fencing, because we want to see some kind of landscaping too.
We want to make sure in the wintertime when there's no leaves, that the light and whatnot doesn't disturb that.
So along the property line here, would it be acceptable if we brought that fence line in so that we don't disturb the existing trees in this area?
Yeah, so it's kind of disturb what's natural, what the natural stuff that's there now.
First, because it's already there, carrying the fence line into the property, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's fine. But you're going to maintain the outside of that area too, not just going to let it grow wide.
Correct. We'd have a gate to go out and maintain that.
Because, you know, that would have to be maintained, otherwise nobody takes care of it, it's going to tear it.
Understood.
Yeah.
Because those are people's housing around you, they're entitled to that.
Understood. With regards to landscaping, I heard you mention landscaping, or have you had the opportunity to review our plan, was there any comments on the landscaping plan that we presented?
Let the, we'll let the planner answer that question. There's any comments regarding the landscaping?
We don't have comments regarding the landscaping plan. That looks good.
Okay.
Got comments regarding lighting, though. I'm not going to want to get into that.
Yeah, but there was, yeah, there was screening, I believe, there was some taller trees around the edge of the property. They're being proposed.
You could have a wall being on the edge, and also the front.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the stone wall, wall is front with the interstate of landscaping, around, adjacent to the sidewalk.
Okay, I don't, I didn't have any questions. Do you have any?
No.
No, okay. So I'm assuming the landscaping and the Board is pretty much fine with, it's just blending in, you know, the trees with the fencing, I guess, and just being able to screen as much as possible from the neighbors.
It would be a solid stockade fence, and I think we would like eight feet high.
Eight feet high.
Eight feet high.
And we'd have a gate on the far end just for maintenance access.
On the far end, what was that?
On the east side, where we're going to preserve the existing vegetation along the property line?
Yeah.
We would have a gate to get in there and do any maintenance access.
Oh, yeah, okay, that'd be fine. Okay.
So you're going to put that on the next drawer, like the next door?
Yeah, we'll refer that to the next plan set.
And do we pick the color now, or do we wait for it?
For left-hand fencing?
Yeah.
And we're going to go with standard, you know, a white, with a white vinyl?
Sounds good.
Normally that's, unless the, unless you're proposing some other color.
We're fine with a little white box.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to make it more difficult to, you know, multiple colors if you're building it one and this and another.
Yeah, white's fine. White's just a little.
Yeah.
What can I do, what should I do with cement?
Okay, yeah, so that's all we have at this time, thank you.
May, Mr. Chairman, my final comments would be before you open it to the public, unless the Board has any more questions, would be just to refocus us on why we're here. We're here for the special use permit, the site plan, the lot line consolidation. We think the materials we presented to you show why we've established and satisfied all the conditions associated with the issuance of those permits. Also note that we are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've addressed that in our letter today, but I will remind you that the comprehensive plan notes that the hamlet is an area for redesign and improvements to promote character of the hamlet. It's not necessarily preservation, it recognizes that to improve the hamlet, it will be an opportunity for redesign and improvements, and we've demonstrated that tonight from Mr. McCormick's and Keith's presentation to you. Additionally, the comprehensive plan addresses that projects should provide housing above retail. We're satisfying that as well to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Additionally, walkability, can't do it completely everywhere, can we do it with our property, but we're introducing sidewalks, and we hope that future developments will continue that to make it more pedestrian-friendly. Finally, architecturally appropriate, I think Mr. McCormick has established that today with the review of the architecture in the area, that we're again consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we think in all respects, this project satisfies the town's goals set forth for the revitalization of the Houstonville hamlet, and we look forward to that. revitalization of the Houstonville hamlet, and we look forward to being a part of it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the floor for public comment. But before I do so, I just, if people have spoke at the last public hearing, um, and you, and you have new questions, that's fine, but if you're gonna get up and rehash the same questions over again, I ask you not to. Because we do have those on record from the previous meeting. So, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead, open up the floor, give you, same as last time, three minutes of open mic, um, to discuss your, to bring up your concerns, so. First, a gentleman in the back.
My name's George Sylvester, I live at eighty-seven Old Hope Road. I was here at the last meeting, I'm not gonna bring up that, but I do have one concern about the right-hand turn into that facility. What's gonna happen to the people coming, going north that would have to make a left-hand turn? They're gonna turn on Old Hope Road, go down to Dean Avenue, and go through Dean Avenue, and go up on to nine D, to head south. And both those intersections are terrible, and plus the traffic on that road already is a lot, and we don't need anymore. That was my big concern, about the, you know, the traffic. I think they should look a little farther around, because people are gonna try to do alternate routes.
I know what you're talking about.
And also, you got the people coming up Old Hope Road, heading to the train station. If they want to stop and get gas, or go to the convenience mart, they're gonna cut through Dean Avenue, up to nine D, and try to get out there, and the sight distance on both of them intersections, it's not very good.
Okay. All right, we know, we'll have your concern addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? It's the woman in the red, white striped shirt.
Carol Dixon, seven Connor Road. This is a horrendous idea, a horrendous idea. There is too much traffic in Houstonville now, yet we can't get out of Marleville Road half the time. You've got a body shop next door, they're doing cars in the road, there's trucks that come in there, you can't get around the corner, and you're gonna have a gas station right next to that? You have a gas station in Wappingers a mile away, you have a gas station on the other side of Houstonville going south, you have two body shops in Houstonville, one on, on Hope Road, the other one on nine D. What are we gonna be known as? The gas and body shop area of the world? This is, this is, people in Houstonville don't want this. I don't know how far this has gone, but this is not what Houstonville is about. We are trying to make Houstonville a historic district, we are trying to restore some of the buildings, and this is not going to help. I mean, they did a beautiful thing, what they designed, but you can't get in and out. You can't get in and out, you can't make a left turn coming out, there's a light right there, the traffic is backed up past Marleville Road and Dean Avenue when they come through the village, and I just think that you need to think about it. These people, and I, I respect them, and they all come in here, but they don't live here. They don't live here, and that's not fair to the people in Houstonville.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Okay. It's the woman in the black, in the back with the blue hat.
Hi, I'm Mel, ten Dean Avenue. This is a petition, a copy of petition that I'm gonna give to the secretary, and I had copied her two weeks ago when I emailed it out. And what this petition basically contains is fifty-three signatures of people whose door I knocked on. And it was wonderful that they opened the doors to a stranger who was masked and who they didn't know, and they were all happy to sign. Half of them didn't even know about this project, and five people total did not sign because of one person with a language barrier, and one person who said that their employer was on the fence, or they didn't know what their employer wanted, one person said that their relatives were on the fence, and one person said straight out she was pro the project. One person, fifty-three signatures against the project of the people who opened their doors. So, I think that's a landslide. I'm basically mirroring what the woman says, the people who live here do not want the gas station. I have a few questions for the board. The first one, how does the board rationalize the impact to the historic character of our, of our hamlet by a gas station? The building is beautiful, think about the cars that are moved with it. We would like to hear an explanation why a gas station would be acceptable in the heart of a historic hamlet. Thank you for providing your few points. Number two, what plan does the town offer for our local post office, which has been housed in the Houstonville Mart? The Mart can reasonably be expected to go out of business if the new convenience store is built just a couple hundred feet away. The post office will not deliver mail on some roads in this area due to the dangerous traffic. What actions will the board take to ensure that these residents will continue to have a local post office, uh, location to pick up their mail? So, thank you for letting us know about that as well. And three, what actions is the town planning to take to mitigate the issue of traffic volume down Route nine D? As stated in the last hearing, the road is packed, and at peak hour, cars are backing up about four thousand feet towards the village. The gas station, which requires frequent turns, would make the situation worse. We would like to know what actions the board is planning on taking to help with traffic volume, gas station or not? Because this is an issue without this gas station. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Public speaking always makes me a little nervous. I'm Melissa Finnegan, I live on seven Marleville Road. I'm sorry. We border this property. We are liked right by those woods that they're supposed to gonna build a fence. My husband and I bought a house in the hamlet of Houstonville twenty-six years ago. We loved that it was a small, little historical village, that's what we wanted. We love going to get our mail at the dairy mart, we love the small, it attracted us, the small-town feel. None of us want this gas station here. I agree with the woman on Connor that said, "We have enough gas stations, it's not like we need gas stations." I can get gas at three different gas stations about a mile from my house, either way, any way I wanna go. I do think that it is a beautiful building, but that's not what we want, we want a small-town thing. Let's talk about this traffic thing? We live about three houses down. You can't make a left turn between four fifteen and six forty-five every night without waiting at least two or three times for that red light to turn. Sometimes you can't make a right turn, because the traffic all comes down nine D, and they don't wanna let people from Marleville Road. The buses get stuck, they can't make a left turn, they can't make a right turn. Buses, I actually, not a lot of them, they try not to make a left turn out of there. I understand that there's, you know, a right turn only. I still think that the traffic's gonna get incredibly backed up, I think that it's gonna create more accidents over there, I think people are gonna be impatient. We have the train station down the road, not only are they gonna go through Dean, they're gonna come flying down Marleville Road just to try to avoid that traffic light right there. It just doesn't make sense. We live there, we don't want it, I'm sorry, we just don't. And, you know, an eight-foot fence, my house has two floors, we're gonna see over that eight-foot fence, there's gonna be a lot of light, more than that, it's this weird sound valley that comes from Charlie, it was Charlie's bar, it was a biker bar, we lived there. When they had a party, we heard every noise, it was just a weird channel that came through our property. There are gonna be people making noise over there, that is going to disturb our house. This is not what we bought into when we bought our house twenty-six years ago. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, sir. I as well, I'm like the town of Houstonville, James Mathiason. Who here lives in Houstonville? You? 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 You?
Excuse me?
No.
All right, hold on.
Okay.
You address the board only, not to, not to people in the public.
Roger that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who here lives in Houstonville?
Who was that?
Who here on the board lives in Houstonville? Anyone?
No.
No.
A question, who here drives on nine D to get to work every day?
I do.
Through Houstonville?
I do.
Two hands?
I do.
Three, all right. It's tough, isn't it? I count usually at that light, just for kicks, when the light turns red or green, you'll go. Sixty to seventy cars in line heading north on nine D. Now, I get it, right, traffic stinks, right, we all know that, and it's not getting better. And putting a gas station in here, yeah, I get it, it's not gonna make it better either. So, compliments again, I think everybody loves your architecture. Compliments, I mean, you guys did a great job on that, and I give you credit there. One problem is, it doesn't look like that when it's all done, because then you got signs, and you got banners, and you got everything else up. Next problem is, you put that up and it's gonna be beautiful, and a lot of people go to it, and they'll stop going to the convenience store, and that convenience store will go out of business. So, again, getting into a gas, just getting into that convenience store now, anybody who knows who wanna get in that convenience store now, can't even get into it and out of it. So, you wanna put a gas station in? You guys know the numbers, probably, you probably need five, six hundred cars a day, I don't know, maybe less, to break even. So, yeah, it's a really bad idea, and also, you had Alex Reese had to do a massive environmental impact just for residential houses, retention ponds, and everything else. If he's at a hundred-year floodplain, three, four hundred feet away, this isn't a floodplain where you wanna put this in? I'd imagine this needs to be D E C, D E P, and all that other stuff, I don't know. Like I said, it's just gonna increase traffic, we don't like that, you know, we live here. If you put this a mile down the road, you put it next to the Dunkin' Donuts, you put it next to that Stewart's, we, everyone in this room will be behind everyone here going, absolutely, we'll take it. Because what you guys did there is a beautiful job, you architects did a great job, really looking at everything, we like that, but we certainly don't, it's impossible, like they said, to get in and out of those roads now. And I think you owe it to us, as the board, to at least do it, impact, maybe sit there and try to get in and out of those roads, do that a couple times a week and see. Dean Avenue, Marleville, Houstonville, go in and out of that convenience store a few times, and then think, wow, we're gonna put a gas station in here? I think that's all I got. But I hope you at least consider what I say. Or put the gas station next to your property.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, the woman with the gold mask.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Franca Patrillo, I live on Apple Lane in Houstonville, and I stand here again tonight to ask the planning board to vote no on this project. I ask this board that represents my town and neighborhood to vote no on a harmful and unnecessary project. I pass this area every single day, and I'm greatly affected by the amount of traffic. I ask you how in the world a delivery vehicle could possibly make a right-hand turn into this gas station without going into the lane of northbound traffic? And how many trucks will even wait five to seven minutes for the traffic to clear so they can do so? What a dangerous scenario that would be. Oh, five to seven minutes if someone lets you in. The traffic runs from past Ketchum Town Road to the south, and to Middle Bush Road to the north. I know, because I live it every day, and this happens several times a day. Once the schools open up again, and more parents and students are on the road, it will be even worse. So, with all due respect, when I hear there is, are no traffic issues, when the traffic flow survey, I believe, was done in January, when many not, many people don't even go out, or when it was done later in the middle of a pandemic, or a majority of people are working from home, how can these results be valid? Who will enforce the no-left turn and turning into people's nearby, people's nearby driveways and roads? The amount of stored underground gas, twenty-four thousand gallons, is of major environmental, health, and safety concern. Leaks and spills could easily happen. And for the applicant to state that this project will not be objectionable to neighboring properties is inaccurate. The twenty-four-hour gas fumes, noise, truck deliveries, and lighting will certainly impact our neighborhood. As for the existing building not having historical value, in the zoning code two forty-seven, it states, "Hamlet mixed-use. Intent: to preserve the historical character, concentrated development pattern, and mixture of uses in existing commercial hamlets, particularly in Houstonville and Swartville, by encouraging restoration, reuse, and visual improvement of existing structures." There is nothing in that code, Wappinger code, that says that things would be enlarged, it's the existing structures that would be restored. I appeal to the pal, to the planning board to put themselves in our position. Would you want this project within feet of your homes? Would you want your family's children or grandchildren exposed to gas fumes and possible water contamination? Are there not enough environmental hazards in which we have to, no control that affect our health? Do we really need to add to this by exposing an existing neighborhood with gas fumes and possible well contamination? Do we need to build a gas station and put up a convenience store where none is needed? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, go on up.
I introduced myself last time, you probably remember, my name's Joe Edwards. I operated a convenience store there for about forty years, and work now as a consultant mainly. I just wanted to, two newsworthy things has happened, the gentleman back there said he didn't know anybody that got killed at that intersection. We had a young man last week that got killed, right down on New Hamburg Road, up from the, the intersection, not far from it. He was going to the train station, and he got ran over, thirty-four years old. He did right across the street from the store where I work, the Houstonville Mart, and he was walking to the gas station, he's thirty-four, I think it was, not the gas station, but the train station. He was run over, and he died last week. And then also, the Stewart's store down the road from us, uh, they announced their closure, they're gonna close next Monday, and the reason they're closing is because they don't have any gas, okay? They don't have any gasoline, so they can't make it without gasoline, I suppose, I don't know, they're building a bigger and better store out on Route nine somewhere, and they're closing their store. But if we do put this convenience store, it's a nice building, I, I like the looks of it, but I would ask you to give him the same thing you give me. One entrance, no gas, put the store in, put the apartments in, and all the rest, and I can compete with him. Because I was raised with these people in Houstonville. I went to the funerals, the weddings, some of the barbecues and the parties they've had there over the last forty-five or fifty years. So, I know the most of them, and a lot of them I know. And I know, I looked, I tried to, since the last meeting, I asked every person while I was working, I couldn't find one person that was in favor of you guys voting with this Gasland. Now, I don't mean no harm to the, the owners of Gasland, I think they're trying to put us, if anyone wanna put a convenience store in there, go ahead, leave the gas off, we can compete with them that way. Stewart's couldn't do it, I've done it for fifteen years, almost, uh, so I think they should be able to compete with us, make it, so we can, make it so we can compete with them. See if they'll build that store without the gasoline, I don't think they will. I think they're more interested in the fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand cars that pass by, and not the people that live there. That's all, you know, that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you. Okay, gentleman in the back, go on up.
So, my name's Anthony, I'm in Maragino, and I also live off of nine D.
Uh, what's your address?
Ten Connor Road.
Okay.
And, uh, like everybody else, and I keep, hate to rehash it, but. And, uh, like everybody else, and I keep, hate to rehash it, but impossible to get out. Impossible. Body shop blocks the road off. There's Snap-on trucks, there's delivered trucks, there's all kinds of stuff happening there. If the gas station goes in, there's gonna be one way in, one way out. Petroleum trucks are gonna have a hard time getting in and out of there. You give them the permit, there's no turning back. It's there forever, for good. Not a good idea. Not a good idea. And, uh, I don't really wanna rehash the same things over and over again, but, uh, in my eyes, not a good thing. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Uh, I've, oh, lost my mask, my glasses. Karen Hagstrom with Steiner Diamond and Glass. Uh, so I know there's been various correspondence going back and forth, and I know that's part of the record before you, and I understand that the public hearing is gonna be adjourned. That was until December, am I correct?
Yes, that's our plan is at the moment, yes.
Okay. Um, so with that in mind, you know that we've hired a consultant, our clients, and we should have something to you prior to the next meeting. But, you know, a lot of people have talked about the architectural design and that it's lovely, but the question is, does it meet your code section two forty-three-five? There's fifteen subparts to that, and we haven't heard any analyzation or narrative about how, uh, this project meets those standards that the planning board is supposed to evaluate, um, when deciding on this project. For, just for one example, because I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but it says, "New structures should be constructed to a height compatible with buildings to which they're visually related." We haven't heard about the height of this building, or the height of buildings that they're supposed to be related to. So that's just one example out of fifteen. Mr. Ward Willis stated it's not, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've presented to you in writing why we think it's not, um, and quoted from the comprehensive plan and your code about the historical nature of this neighborhood. And it's not just us. The county planning letter, an independent agency, has also stated that, in their comments, that they don't think it's consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan. So I'll just close by stating that with all that's before you at this point on the record, this really cries out for a positive declaration, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else here? Yes, Ms. Lucary.
Hi, I'm Robin Lucary, uh, fifteen Red Hawk Hollow Road in Wapingers Falls. I'll be very brief. I agree with everything that people have been saying. There's just one thing I wanted to add. Uh, the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development estimates that twenty-seven cars travel through the Houstonville hamlet daily. To me, the number-one reason this gas station convenience store should not be built in this hamlet is the quick stops associated with the twenty-four-seven gas station and a convenience store with the use of gas delivery trucks. People going in for a gallon of milk, people going in for gas. It's a constant in and out. So, something that would be more appropriate, I hope the project doesn't proceed, something like a restaurant, a hair salon, where the traffic isn't just a continual flow. I think, well, I've lived here, well, I've been traveling up and down nine D, uh, for many, many years, uh, and we know it's a problem. So, I think that, um, the traffic is probably the number-one issue, and this particular type of, um, gas station convenience store uh, would lead to an incredible amount of in-and-out traffic. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else? Yes.
My name is Mitch, Mr. Stewart's for sale. He called me last week, and he put a D restriction, no gas. So is the lot next door owned by the BP. It's for sale with a D restriction, no gasoline there. Just let you know, Stewart's gone out of business, because the person next door bought the lot, but evaded them to put a gas there.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing as no one else wants to make any comments, uh, get a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry, hold on, back up.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Yeah, used the wrong terminology again. We're gonna go ahead, yeah, sorry, for December the seventh. We're gonna adjourn that too. So the motion was made by, um, okay, second by?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will see the applicant again on the seventh. The, what was that?
The people out there, they wanna have a few words with you guys.
Is there people out there?
Yeah, there's quite a few of us.
How many, I mean, I've asked if people could have come in.
I was going to wait.
Okay, so I guess we're not done.
You guys, uh, biggest pollutioner is noise. I got a gas land truck going down my house, five times a week, and they jake brake. You know what that sounds like?
Is there people that wish to speak calmly to the board regarding this project is fine? If you wanna be irrational, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna take any more comments.
We were irrational because you shut us out.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We didn't know that people were out there. We thought they were sending people in. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we get a, so let's, all right, get a motion to reopen this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded.
It's all your fault, because you're here.
So we're gonna reopen, we're gonna reopen the public hearing, so we can get your comments.
You tracked all the people all in?
If you wish to come up to the podium. All right, state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Walensky. Yeah, I'm a little livid. I live at twenty-four ninety-eight Route nine D. But before it was that, it was one oh-six, and one oh-four, and then one oh-eight. They kept changing the address when my grandmother lived there. I bought her estate. I had to put a foundation under the house. But I'm outside my yard, which is a nice double lot, and I've got a truck rolling by at about forty miles an hour going north, hitting a jake brake. You know what a jake brake sounds like?
We do.
You do, okay. Imagine that at four o'clock in the morning, and then at six o'clock in the morning. And as it goes by, there's a little gas land sign on the trailer. One day I caught the guy, because I heard him coming up the hill by Middle Bush. So I stood out in my driveway and went. The guy pulled over, stopped that, and wanted to get out fighting. Okay? This is gas land. I already talked to the town supervisor and told them, "We got a problem. There shouldn't be jake brakes going off in a neighborhood. Because if you think there should be, let me know where you live, and I'll go get a truck and do it for you." It's a pleasant surprise at four in the morning. Okay? And that's just the noise pollution. Across the road from me, there's an Audubon Sanctuary, a Greenway Trail, but the Rees's loud, go in. Early in the morning, I like to hear the birds. I don't wanna hear traffic. Traffic is a problem with modern-day workers. But we don't have law enforcement to slow them down and, you know, not so much trespass on the people. Because I end up going out every day picking up garbage. Why? Because I seem like I'm a garbage can. Every day I got broken bottles, and all sorts of cans and bottles and coffee cups in my yard. Why don't you guys come help me? See what it's like. One day I was cutting the lawn. Now, I set back, I had a hedge right up along the edge of the road. I set it back fifteen feet from the center of the road, so I had enough block barrier so I could see up the roads each way. I got one guy cutting the lawn, and the guy up the hill, and he parks right there. I can't see traffic coming up the hill. That's okay, because the traffic isn't doing thirty-five, they're doing about fifty. Meanwhile, I'm cutting the lawn there one day, and someone just turned, uh, making a left across traffic. This girl damn near hit me when I was cutting the lawn on a push mower. Because she pulls right up into my yard to go around a car at about thirty-five, forty. We don't have traffic control. So what are we gonna do with this gas land when people are making a right, and a left, and a left, and a right? Now, if they're gonna have to get in on the right and go out on the right, that means the truck is gonna come through the Village of Wapingers, and I'm gonna hear a jake brake more? No. Put a stop to it. If gas land is here, tell them to get rid of that driver. Because the next time he gets out of his truck, he's gonna meet up with more. Okay? And I think you people oughta come and see what the situation is. Because you're not really paying attention. And from what I saw when I first came in, it looked like this was a done deal, and it best not be. Because the spit's gonna hit the fan. I don't care who you guys are. Not planning, accepting. The hamlet of New Hamburg has been that way for a long time, and I like it. And I've known Joe, who used to run the Dairy Mart, for over thirty years. And I can't see you guys letting someone go in there to muscle them out. Because I always called him the pillar of that little community. Everybody knew him. And as I told you guys that run the place now, you gotta keep Joe, because everybody knows him. So what are we gonna get? Another month to go and debate this? Because I'll be back.
Okay, well, we, we're just taking comments in. It's a public hearing. We're not...
Yeah, it's a public hearing that you shut a lot of people out of.
That's not, that wasn't intentional, okay? We asked if there was anybody else that wished to speak.
And I asked you to wait, you gotta wait, you gotta wait.
We adjourned it to another time. We thought, because we did see people coming in from out there, that there was nobody else that had any comments.
That's when I came in.
We did reopen, we did reopen it so that you could speak.
Well, I'm sorry I got a little livid. I'm sorry I got a little loud, but listen, the small people aren't being heard. It's all money. We don't need another gas station.
We are listening.
We're listening to everything is said.
Okay?
Well, I find it hard to believe, because what I've seen on actual TV out there, and what I saw when I first came in, I should say heard, yes, it's a great rendering. My mom used to do that all the time. Have you ever gone in the Village of Fishkill? Have you ever seen Van Wick Hall? She's the one that kinda hit me and my brother on the shoulders, that you guys gotta do this. We ended up putting in custom-made windows to fit the historical society. Then we had to take off all the old cedar roofing and put up new cedar roofing without paint on it. Go look at it. It's still falling apart.
I've seen it, yeah.
But that's what's gotta be done. You gotta keep some of it historic, because if you forget where you're going and where you're from, you got a rough road going ahead. Bulldoze it down and put up bigger. It don't look right. It don't fit the area.
Thank you. Well, it's gonna find out. Is there anybody else out there?
Fourteen men, but I did go out and ask.
You did go out and ask her, right?
That if anyone wanted to speak, they should come in.
Okay.
Yeah, just see if the gentleman...
Oh, before, Mitch, before you, just got one more. A gentleman in the back, did you, did you wish to speak? The gentleman in the back in the blue shirt? No? Okay. All right. All right, Mitch, come on. Thank you.
Gas land truck doesn't run twenty-four hours. Our trucks run from six o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock to six o'clock in the afternoon. Just wanna say, our trucks not until two o'clock in the morning. Absolutely, never had. And also, the seastore owner, Joe, he sold the store eight years ago. Now they put him as a front, and he's a, he's the landlord of the deli. The deli owned by Rafik, the guy who lives in Long Island. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so if there's no one else that wishes to speak, we'll try this again. So, need a motion to go ahead and adjourn the public hearing to December seventh?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion's made, seconded. Go in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Zach.
Keep your fingers crossed.
What's the, uh? Night, Karen.
Oh, okay. Over Creek is the next one. That's gonna be quick. Let's see, did I bring?
Good night.
Do have that. Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is the Over Creek Lot Line realignment. Is there anyone here? Yeah, would you check to see if there's anybody on the call?
I don't know. Did we tell, did we tell them that they didn't have to come for this?
I don't think so.
Because is this a negative deck?
Okay, there's Mr. Reese.
I believe my interview was supposed to be here, but you just got me.
Well, this should...
Well, I mean, this is just, this is just a...
So I, I believe tonight, I think we're here just to vote upon a negative declaration for your...
So you can go ZBA.
For your project.
And then to go ZBA, that's possible.
Okay, so we had nothing else...
Here to answer any questions.
Uh, we had nothing else to discuss, correct, with the, um, with this project at this time? All right, so everybody's got the, um, everybody will send a copy of the preliminary, um, actually, sorry, the negative declaration? Okay, so the, um, anybody have any questions regarding the negative declaration?
Yeah.
Okay. We get a, uh...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion to approve the negative declaration?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. It's quick and easy, painless. Okay, you're welcome.
Take care.
Yeah, probably get the next, uh...
Yep. Now you can't even charge it.
I was even curious, but then, uh, anyone? Yeah, let's save the cartridge.
So, five.
The what?
I don't imagine they live.
No, it was. Well, yeah.
Five-one-nine-five.
I saw your mom's house in June. That's right, you were telling me.
Yeah. Okay, they're done, uh...
Everybody's trying to...
As long as you can keep the six feet from somebody else, I don't see why not. Yeah. Oh, boy. All right. Crazy this tonight.
See, this is, this is lot two? So they have the difference here.
About seven thousand.
About seven thousand. I'll ask.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is the Poughkeepsie, Poughkeepsie Nissan Lot Line Realignment. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Albert Roberts. I represent Poughkeepsie Nissan and Marek LLC, which is the owner of this property. I would like to address some comments that Mr. Marinaccio made last time, and that was the possibility of another egress onto Route Nine. As most of you know, I've been practicing in this area for fifty years, and it's been the consistent practice of DOT to limit the egress onto Route Nine for as long as I can remember. Mr. Hartman of Marek LLC will come up and tell you his experience when he tried to get another exit onto Route Nine. It didn't happen. And I'd just like to refer you to the more recent site plan approvals, which is Greenbound Plaza. That was a consolidation of several parcels. And while there are some egress, egresses onto Route Nine, it was a net loss of entrance points onto Route Nine. The practice has always been as much as possible to direct traffic to an interior road where there are signalized traffic lanes to make for a safe entrance onto Route Nine. And the topography on this site, and I'm sure many of you, I pass it four or five times a day, there is a very deep swell along Route Nine, which would make another entrance somewhat more difficult. But the reality is that going to DOT even for a conceptual approval or comment will take several months. Everybody is behind because of COVID. And, um, it's my indication that if this project is delayed much longer to wait for DOT, that it will fail. And it's always been my understanding that the town was looking to limit the number of car dealerships on Route Nine, limit the parking along, uh, you know, the front of Route Nine. And the new project, I think, will do just that. It's gonna eliminate parking, it's gonna eliminate another dealership. And I think all in all, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody. And at this point, I would like to turn, uh, the matter over to Christian Pajee, who will give you some of the details. But I also think Eric Hartman will speak in a representative of the purchaser. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Pajee for the applicants for these three separate applications. I'll just go through some of the changes that we've made to the plan and some clarification of the plans, based on the discussions that we had at the last planning board meeting. First of all, I just wanna clarify the lot coverage and landscaping that is indicated on the plans. There's one of the lots is pre-existing non-conforming. As far as lot coverage for Impervious goes, we are reducing that, uh, non-conformity with the, the lot line realignment. The same is true for the landscaping area. We are reducing that non-conformity with this lot line realignment, so it's our understanding that a variance would not be required. The regarding storage, outdoor storage, we're no longer gonna be proposing that. There was some discussion relative to that at the last meeting. In talking to the applicant, it was decided to modify the front of the building slightly to enclose an overhang area. That area will be used for storage, so there will be no need for any outdoor storage on the site. There was comments from the engineer or the planner, I believe, that we just received indicating that we should add a note to that effect, that there's gonna be no outdoor storage proposed, so we, we have no issue with that, so we'll add that note. There was a lot of discussion regarding, uh, truck circulation through the site and the easement that's proposed at that northerly rear access. We've provided turning movements for both box trucks and for large tractor trailers showing the different, um, circulation through, through the site, both through that northerly access onto Sergeant Palmetier Way and also on the southern entrance also. Again, the reason for the easement and to allow, continue to allow for, uh, circulation through both sites to continue is to just minimize the amount of truck traffic there is through that customer parking lot. So with the truck, uh, turning movements that we've provided on the plan, we're just, we were demonstrating that a box truck could maneuver out of the front loading dock and take a left towards that northerly access and, and make that, make that turn. Regarding landscaping, we've shown several areas to be landscaped. In front of the new addition where the loading dock is, I'll just point it over here. In, um, right in this area here, we're proposing several dwarf, uh, evergreens. They will grow to a mature height of ten to twelve feet. And the spacing that we've shown will provide a pretty dense screening to that, um, loading dock area. There's also several areas of landscape, mulch landscaped areas along Route Nine. Those are shown, um, with the planting schedule also. There's also a few, um, of those pines, those evergreens added to the rear of the building along Sergeant Palmetier Road. There was some discussion and some concerns raised at the last meeting about just the view from Sergeant Palmetier Road. So, um, if there's something that the board would like to see, that's a little bit more robust than what we're showing, we're open to that. But we were out at the site and drove and walked along the rear of the building along Sergeant Palmetier Road, and it's pretty heavily wooded there as it stands now, so there's not too much room to even add plantings without cutting trees down, um, to add trees. But if there's something in particular that the board has in mind or would like to see, um, we would be open to that also. We've added several, or indicated several areas for snow storage, um, the southerly site, the, uh, the Plunkton Hills, uh, site. They're all indicated on the, on the plan. Uh, the next issue that was, seemed to be a, one of the major concerns at the last meeting was lighting. With regard to the southerly site, the Plunkton Hill site, we are showing almost all of the existing light fixtures, the ground-mounted and pole-mounted, along Route Nine being removed. With exception, I think, of one light pole at the access to the site from Route Nine, just to light that access. There were, there were also several other poles that we are indicating to be removed and trying to really limit the lighting to the interior side of the, uh, the parking lot. We'll also replace any of the fixtures with LEDs and, uh, lower lumen to three thousand Kelvin. And we could provide photometrics, of every, of all the lighting for that site. We're just requesting that that be allowed to be a condition of, uh, final approval. With regard to the Nissan site, the same, uh, applies for there. We are willing to demonstrate that that site is in conformance with the current town code. We could provide photometrics, we'll provide details and specifications on all the light fixtures there and just demonstrate it does indeed meet the code. If there's modifications that need to be made, to meet the code, then the applicant is willing to do that. Regarding signage, there is a waiver that's going to be requested of the board, um, with regard to the square footage of signage that's, that's allowed. Currently, a twenty-five square feet is allowed. We're proposing fifty square feet. And that has to do with the, uh, the fact that there are two separate companies that are being distributed at the site and that both require, uh, some signage, and I'll let Brandon from Mori Architects get a little bit more into that. And the last thing, as Mr. Roberts had mentioned, was the DOT access. The exit-only, uh, access to Route Nine. We've contacted the DOT several times. We have a couple calls out to them, just to, to see how they would receive this. We haven't heard back yet. It's our experience really that they don't provide conceptual or theoretical approvals. For something like this, they'll wanna see design plans, um, studies and, and all of that and go through a formal review process. So as Mr. Roberts mentioned, there's certain, um, deadlines that the applicant has to abide by. They're, it's not really the, the board's problem, but we're just letting you guys know for context why we seem to be rushing or pushing the, the matter. The applicant is not opposed to pursuing the exit. They would just like it to be, um, the board to allow them to do it, do that, pursue that in good faith. And if we do get a response from DOT that they would allow that, we would end up having to, we would end up coming back for an amended site plan. But we're just asking that that be separated from this application. Given the reasons that Mr. Roberts just brought up, and I know the applicant, Mr. Hill, Calvin Hill, will also elaborate a little bit more on that also regarding the timing. That's really it for these, the site, site details. I know that there were some comments from the engineer and the planner. And if there's questions, happy to go over those. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the architect to go over the building changes and, uh, the signage.
I think we, um, I think we need to start with the, um- The which? Justifying those calculations and that. Yeah, that's the, that's the one thing we need to. We wanna go over the, the areas and how you've come about to, to get the, uh, the differences in the two properties. Now, I'll let, um, I'll let Pete-
I'll take care of it.
Tara go ahead and, uh-
So Christian, on, uh, on lot, on lot number, number two, you're showing, uh, that there's about a seven thousand, seven thousand square foot, decrease, which is, which is, you know, correct. But we were, we were looking earlier, why wouldn't that seven thousand, seven thousand square foot decrease on lot two be an increase on lot number one? Because that's what the lot line realignment shows.
Cause we're actually removing pavement on lot two. There's pavement being removed to add landscape islands within the parking lot itself.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I mean, we're here. You're adding, you're, you're basically taking this existing parking lot here-
Right.
Which is about seven thousand square feet. And you're adding it to lot number one with the lot line change. So lot number one, instead of being, lot number one, instead of being only a one thousand, well, less than that, about a one thousand square foot increase, it really should be a, you know, a seven thousand square foot increase. So, uh, you know, we were, we were, we were trying to figure it out earlier, but we, I mean, but we couldn't figure it out how it could only be a thousand square feet on lot number one. Understand, understand on lot number two, that's decreasing, hundred percent. But and unfortunately, that would mean a, a variance. Because you're increasing the non-
Right.
Non-conformity.
Is this something that we could follow up with? Just, I mean, we could make it more clear, cause we went through these calculations multiple times, double-checked them, triple-checked them. And they all checked out. So if there's another way that we can, um-
But you're not just, yeah, oh, yeah, sure, that's fine. But as far as the current, the, the current Nissan, new car building, we'll call it. You're not, you're not removing any, uh, existing asphalt from there, right?
We are not.
Okay, so then because of, because of the lot line change, that whole section of parking lot that was on lot two before is now coming over to lot number one. So that's where we're, that's where we just didn't get it. But, I mean, if you get, if, you know, if you gotta go back and double-check it, that's fine, but you follow our thinking?
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
All right, well-
Yeah, well, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to-
No, I mean, that's fine.
Illustrate it right now.
That's fine.
We could definitely follow up. I mean, we'll, we'll follow up tomorrow. We can give you guys some illustrations, just like the shaded areas and just make it crystal clear what we're, what we're saying. If there's, any sort of discrepancy with how we're interpreting it and how you're interpreting it, we can-
Yeah, that's, sure. Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so still need to, to stall. Is there any other items on your letter you wanted to go over?
Um, as far as my, uh, my letters on the two, uh, cause we kinda lumped the two projects like together here, so, they asked for that the meets and bounds, uh, you know, descriptions on the easements be made a condition of approval. You know, we don't have an issue with that. There's an agreement between the two properties regarding electric servicing and light poles. We should, we should get a, a copy of that so that the planning board attorney can take a look at it. We talked about the difference in, um, Impervious areas. Let me just see if there's anything on the Plunkton or us. That's the wrong project. Here we go. No, you know, a lot of the comments are, a lot of the comments are the same because they, because they apply to both, uh, you know, sites, so we don't have anything extra on the, uh, Plunkton and Hills. We just wanted, uh, notes, notes added to the, uh, the site plan, just, um, stating they're not gonna have any outdoor storage of materials and also what their analysis was on the water and sewer use difference. of materials, and also what their analysis was on the water and sewer use difference from what it currently is to what it will be. And other than that, we didn't have anything else on the Clifton and Hills. The planning consultants probably got some comments.
Yeah, so if we're sort of lumping the two together...
Sounds, yeah, we're pretty much at this point, we're putting all three applications at the same time.
Okay. We still want to see lighting plans for both. He brought you through it. He mentioned that he would like those lighting plans to be a condition of the approval. Would refer to the board on that. I can know that it is lighting, particularly here, is priority for you. Our only other comment is about landscaping. We discussed screening of the loading dock from Route 9. They added trees. They're going to do well there. There are a few opportunities that we identified for additional screening. Check it on the map if you'd like to see. So, we've got southbound traffic coming here, and this will add a good green wall. The other options is in here, although I do know that the applicant is intending to use a portion of that area for snow storage in the winter. So, we would need to make those two compatible. And the other is, a question for you, with the nature of this additional median, this additional curbing, I don't know if that's going to have soil within the curb or not, but additional landscaping, more of these, you know, one, two there, we just provide additional screening. That was our landscaping comment, just potential opportunities for additional screening.
To screen additionally.
For the board to consider.
What size are the trees you're going to put in there for the screening?
So, they grow to a true height of around 10 to 12?
What size are you going to start with?
They are two-inch, three-inch caliber.
So, what's the height of that tree? Six foot, seven foot?
I think it's around there. I can, we can follow up. Where are you looking for something a bit more mature?
Something for more of an immediate screening rather than body center.
So, we could just make sure that whatever is being planted is at least six feet in height, is that...
I would think something, you know, we want to see it screened off. Because we do have a rule that you don't have to have, you're not supposed to have a garage door facing Route 9. We're making the exception to let you do that, so we would like to see, not say that that's...
So, yeah, we could...
Maybe something eight foot, nine foot.
Eight?
Yeah, you're going to screen it, not screen it.
I'm not sure if additional height will provide additional screening. A six-foot tree is pretty mature and full at that point, and just the topography is relatively flat, so... But we could, we'll look at that, that's not, it shouldn't be an issue, so. And it's our understanding that as far as the overhead doors facing Route 9, that code section applies to automotive uses. And since this is not an automotive use, it's our understanding that that code section doesn't apply.
No, it is correct.
It is correct, yeah.
But we are more than willing to beef up the size of the trees if it looks like they're lacking. And I know that the applicant would not be opposed to adding a couple of trees in that little landscape island that you just pointed out right here. Along Route 9, the applicant is just concerned with blocking the building, obviously, because that's really how he's marketing his product, you know? So, he would prefer to not add any more landscaping, especially in the form of tall trees along Route 9. But we have no problem with adding a couple in that small landscape area in front of the doors.
Are they just a straight line or is staggering?
They're staggered.
They're staggered. Where's the sign going to be?
The sign is proposed right here.
Do you have a height on that sign?
10 feet.
Yeah, 10 feet.
If you want us to briefly go over the signage, because I know we are requesting a few waivers. So, to start with the signage, what we're, the code allows for a site to have one sign per retail establishment, one wall sign per retail establishment. Even though this is one owner, we really technically have two different outlets. One is more of a consumer one, one's more of a contractor. So, it's really two separate entities, so that's kind of our reasoning for the two different signs. I mean, they are two separate companies in a lot of ways. So, we are proposing two signs, one for Waterware, one for Clifton and Hills, that's the contractor side. Those signs both would fall within the zoning regulations, except for the fact that there's two. We are then proposing a third sign on the opposite entrance, so the southern entrance on the other side. The code does allow for corner lots that have, facing two streets, for them to have an additional sign, one per street. So, that's our reasoning to see if we could ask for that additional sign as well, so that we have front and jump both roads. Lastly is the monument sign. The monument sign, the code only allows for one sign, but unfortunately, still sort of the same comment. We have two businesses that we're really trying to represent. So, we've shown it to fit within all the other aspects of the code, the 10-foot height, the 25 square feet per sign, but we are asking, once again, for that ability to have that second sign. So, those would be the three waivers.
Are they going to be lit?
So, lighting would be back, these will all be backlit channel letters, the internally illuminated, flat plastic panel on the monument.
Is there any way they could do?
I'm sorry?
The street sign, the street, the one that's out by the road? Is there any way they could be wood and then lit from underneath? You know, we actually just went out, remember?
You mean underneath or from the top?
Well, from the top or whatever.
Shining down?
Remember, like when we were looking at the gas stations, you know, for example?
Right.
Instead of those internally lit plastic signs?
Yeah.
The wooden ones we were seeing were much more attractive, and they were just lit, you know? They just, they were awful.
I think the owner would be open to that if he can get the two signs. I think having them, whether they're lit from below or above, so that we don't glare, obviously, on the street, I think those are very attractive signs.
But a painted wood sign, right?
Yeah, I don't know if...
Plastic lit internally.
Well, it would probably be like a CNC plastic, not wood, but it would still have that same belief that you're kind of talking about. So, I think, I think he would be very open to that if he could get both signs.
Yeah.
Yes, I was a lot, I didn't mention this last time, but we have a store...
Can you come up to the mic?
That's exactly...
Can you come up here?
Mr. Hill, sir.
Can you come up here to the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's, I'm thinking.
I didn't mention it before, but we have a store in Red Hook, right in the middle of town, right by the Dunkin' Donuts. And we cleaned up a building that wasn't very attractive, and I think they're happy with us. And we have that kind of a sign. We have, it's lit, not from within, but from outside. So, I don't think we have any problem with that.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's a great compromise.
Is that lighting for that going to be on the schedule that you're going to give us?
Yes, we would show that as part of it. We'll coordinate that with the lighting plan.
Yeah, the signage, I know that we've been through the signage before. This is the whole Route 9 corridor where we ended up getting all the, all those signs, again, from all the different plazas, so I don't have that in front of me. But we, if, we'll have to discuss, I guess, within terms of height. I mean, we dealt with Lawrence Farms, which was a height issue at first.
Yeah, but we gave him...
But that was because he was in a lower elevation. And that was, I was just going to ask the question, is this a similar? Because I didn't, I looked at the location, but I didn't look to see the elevations on the map. And is this a, I know that the property itself is below Route 9, but is the location of the sign, is it below the street level?
It won't be really, it's pretty...
Or is it right at the street level?
It's pretty much at the street level, but we will be below that 10-foot zoning height. So, we're still going to stay lower than the permitted zoning, so even though we are asking for the two signs.
Just asking for more, for...
For more area.
Right, for more area of signage.
Right, we're just asking to have that second business, you know?
Were you thinking of giving them a little bit more height? Were you thinking of giving them...
No, 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 I was saying for height, just leaving the height alone, but just saying that, you know, for the size, the overall size, as long as it's not a huge tower, you know, as long as it's, you know, reasonable for the speed, you know, people are coming down. The smaller the sign, the harder it is to read from a distance, you know, that type of thing, so... Obviously, if you were to put one on, you know, Sergeant Palmetiere, it'd be much smaller because the speed limit is much, much less on that road than it would be on the state highway.
Yeah, we're not proposing to do another monument sign on that side. We would just do a wall sign.
Do a wall on...
Because we're only permitted one monument sign for the whole site. It doesn't, the code, at least in my interpretation, didn't have a mechanic for two monument signs on each street face like it does for that corner lot, so...
I just wanted to make one other comment. These on the building now, as you've probably already noticed, but these are existing. We're not adding them, so they're both fine, we're there. All we're doing is putting a letter on it.
Okay. And just the question of...
And they're going to be lit, is that correct?
The wall signs will be the backlit channel letter, so the light is inside, the letter shines on the wall, so it's not something that shines out.
So, you're going to show us how that's going to be?
Just needs to be labeled.
We just, you know, we need it labeled.
Oh, I know, they are labeled as...
Well, I don't know what the lighting is going to be.
Yeah, the lighting.
That could be very bright.
Just stating, just stating what you had just mentioned.
Okay.
It's going to be, you know, the light will be behind the letter shining out the building wall, that's all.
Yeah, no problem.
On the exterior, I mean, obviously, it's just you're going to put a, you're just going to resurface that with the exterior insulation system or...
So, a lot of it right now is kind of parched block. There's, I'd say probably 60% of it is just exposed block. Most of the stuff that faces Route 9 is the parched block. What we're proposing to do is paint a lot of those areas, give it a base with a second color. And you can see the two colors here. Then, we're going to keep the red canopy that's part of Clifton and Hills color, so it really kind of works out well. What the other portion of the plan to make sure that we had all of our, no outdoor storage, was to enclose a small portion of that canopy between the columns. So, we will be building up the same sort of thing. You'll have a split face block, we will paint that to darker ground, then the beige. We're going to carry that around, but then, once we get to Sergeant Palmetiere way, what we're going to do is we're going to kind of pop up some accent areas and punch in a few new windows upon that location, just to give that facade a little bit of rhythm and a little bit of something to look at.
If I can jump in about the impervious areas. Pete, are you looking at the, thanks? These numbers that you're looking at, where you're coming up with 1,000?
Uh, yeah.
So, this number, all right, the numbers that we were showing are percentages, showing that we meet the minimum and maximum percentages. That area that you're looking at, that 87,974 is the maximum that's allowed. It's not, it's existing. So, we're just comparing the proposed to what's the maximum allowed. The reason why the percentage goes down is just because the area of the lot is going up. Because there's nowhere, I don't think there's anywhere on the plan that shows 1,000 square foot and change increase, because it is obviously more than that. And again, we could, I think a meeting possibly with the consultants to just review the final items would be helpful, just to make sure that we're on the same page, because it is confusing with the three different applications.
Well, okay, so you're saying that the 87,900 is what now?
So, that is the maximum allowable, so it's labeled as a maximum. That's not what's, we're not indicating that to be existing, it's just the maximum allowable. And the next column is either existing or proposed, if it's changing, so... So, I'll admit that is not the clearest way to demonstrate it.
I see what you're saying. So, I mean, I guess if we could see something existing, existing and proposed, because...
And we show it just in the percentages, but we could also add it with a square footage, so it's very clear.
Yeah, so the, I guess the confusion came up, we were looking at the percentages and we were trying to find...
Right.
The actual numbers, because a tenth of a percentage is not a very big difference. We wanted to know what that actually translates to, and that's where we got into 1,000 versus 7,000 versus...
Okay. That helps.
Pretty sure they're lit, but we will double check.
But a question for the outdoor stories that you're proposing, or I guess...
Not outdoor.
Not outdoor proposing. What's the square footage of that?
About 1850, I want to say, is that canopy area, 1850, 1895, somewhere in that area, under 1,900, it's a little short.
Okay. Barbara, how would that relate to, is that increasing square footage of the building?
No, it's an outdoor question. My question is, what type of storage? I don't want, I don't want the open business and then all the stuff, and that's a margin area.
See what you're saying.
It's not closed, so to, I mean, I guess, code-wise, if you look at it townwide, but code-wise, building code-wise, it is an increase in what I would consider the building. So, it's really interior space once we enclose it with those exterior walls.
So, the roof is already there, you are, it will be fully screened.
Correct.
You are putting walls up around it.
Real walls going around.
What he's saying is that this is what's allowed by code.
That's that whole area to the north of like the larger Clifton and Hills entrance. There's a couple of columns that are holding that canopy.
This isn't existing, he's saying.
We're going to infill in between those columns.
This is what's allowed by code, the percentage.
You said it was about 1,000 square feet?
No, no, I want to say it's just under 1,900.
This is what's actually, this plus...
I can verify that, and we can have that remain clear on the plan.
We'll check it.
That'd be great, and just make sure that that's reflected in...
Yeah, he'll send us on. I'll have somebody check it tomorrow.
Okay. What else was there?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
We're looking at, that's lot one, right?
Malcolm, was there anything else on, either of the letters you had to discuss?
On the planning letters?
Everything else has been...
Um, apart from the issue of lighting, no.
Okay, so everything's been somewhat addressed then this evening, okay.
Depending on where the additional screening comes in to play, I'll look for that on the next mission.
Is it possible, or can the board authorize us to meet with the consultants to just hammer through these few outstanding items, just to minimize the back and forth? Because the applicant is in a position where they're, just based on their deadlines, we need to request that the board authorize their consultants to prepare a resolution for condition approval.
What are you talking about?
Pardon?
I think he's talking specifically about landscaping and depending on...
In terms of the, yeah, but that would be in terms of, you know, any of the stuff that's already been discussed in the letters. So, in terms of that, it still needs to get a final approval by us, or whatever that's, whatever gets, you know, hashed out through those conversations still has to come back here, you know, in a final plan.
Yeah, just want to make sure that the landscape is meeting what they're looking for. Also, we'll bring it back and make sure that it's up to snuff with what you're looking for. And then, just this technical issue of the lot areas and covered areas, if we can go over that ahead of time.
I don't see why not, I don't see where there's a problem.
Are we going to have, yeah, we're going to have a hearing?
Well, that raises the other question, is it required under the code for a public hearing? It becomes the other...
The lot can tell that it wouldn't, and site plan wouldn't, I mean, it could be waived by the planning board for site plan.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not adjacent to any, directly adjacent to any residential properties. You know, there's no increased impact on what's going on there. So, I mean, I'll leave that to the board, what's everybody else's feeling on that public hearing?
People are going to bring up the fact that it's carrying pollutants and all of that crap right in the future. Because what we did with Tractor Supply, the little, meaty, greedy things that they had to bring up, that's what I'm saying.
Cause we have residential catch.
Yeah, you really.
This would be excused from all of that?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to have the public hearing portion of it. I mean, they're still bound, they're still bound to any other, any other regulatory agency if they had something that was hazardous, just like Tractor Supply was. So, I mean, they're regulated by that. We, we had no real input on that, because, you know, the mitigation of, of that was technically in, in their hazard plan anyway. Cause it was all under the roof. There's no, it's not getting wet, it's not getting.
We don't need to have it, then let's not have it.
Okay, well, I'm, we have to.
I agree with that.
You waive it?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's take a vote on it, uh, get a motion to waive the public hearing. Okay, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that's taken care of. So we waive that. Um, in terms of, uh, authorizing the, um, professional staff to meet with the applicant, um, to discuss it and the motion to approve that?
Make it.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to make a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries, so you've got our blessing to sit down with them and.
Thank you.
Hash out all the details.
Yeah, that'll be helpful, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll go from there. Just ask when, actually, I'll ask Barbara, when that meeting does come up, please let me know. I'm just curious of what's going on. Other than that, um, I mean, I don't know if we have any, anybody else has anything that needs to get addressed. I know that there's.
Well, I, I know they were concerned about the other entryway. I don't, that was just a suggestion that might be better for them, but I'm not making it a contingent on this project.
We may, oh, for the, the exit on Route Nine, yeah.
Yeah. The exit, rather.
Okay, alright. So if they, if it's, you continue to, it's, you continue its, its existing approval, which is, uh.
Right.
Right, so that can remain. It's not, apparently, it's not gonna be an issue at this point in time, so, alright.
I just wanted to mention.
Go ahead.
We have no issue, it's, it's in our comment memo, but we have no issue with, um, moving forward with lighting and landscaping be a condition of approval. Sarah and I had discussed that, and we can, we can move forward that way.
What, with the lighting, you mean? Just to move forward without seeing a lighting plan?
Yeah, that we can make an acceptable lighting plan, acceptable is defined by us and by you, a condition of.
Yeah, as long as we have the, as long as we have a lighting plan in place prior to voting on final approval.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the lot coverage, if it, if it bears out that it is less than one tenth of a percent, I would waive that. It turns out it's a lot larger, you'll need to go for a variance.
Okay. Yeah, but it.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, but the way I was reading that earlier, isn't it just it's less than, they're, they're reducing it by a ten? So it's a really, it's a non-issue, it's a current non-conformity, but they're making.
Less than.
Right.
Yeah.
They're not increasing the non-conformity.
Exactly, so as long as it's not increased, it shouldn't be an issue, so, okay.
Regarding the lighting plan, you, I, I'm not sure if we would be able to be, to have a lighting plan developed for both sites in time for the vote at the next meeting, but we would request that it be a condition of approval prior to signing, and we would be agreeing to make, to demonstrating that the lighting plan meets.
Provide us with, provide us with the information that, the products that they're proposing. So, usually, most of the lighting companies will provide you cut sheets for the, for the lighting. And at the same time, they will provide you with some graphical information, um, you know, showing how far, you know, it, it's gonna illuminate with distances, and I believe that the planner should be able to kinda get a good judgment from those plans, or from those cut sheets, to at least have a good idea whether or not that plan will work.
Yeah.
So as long as we have that information, I think we can, uh, hopefully make an educated decision. And that takes care of both of the, those note on both of the plans. Now, the, so signage would be the only item that we didn't discuss at this point. Well, we did, but we didn't. Um, as it's proposed, how do you guys feel with, with the proposed sign right now, currently?
As it's proposed, I don't like, I'm not a fan of the backlit signs.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, we, it's one of those things that we need to, so as, as with the amendment of doing it with a downlighting? To do the, um, similar to what we were looking at, those couple of gas stations we went to, uh, it was a couple of months ago. If they do that with a, with a, with light shining down across the face.
Are you talking about like, like a non-illuminated channel letter, or standoff lettering, and then just have like sconces off of the wall, that downlight?
Yeah, so if you're, yeah, you're.
Gable roof or something.
Exactly, yeah, so if you're softening around the top of it, just having that light shine, shine down across the face of the sign.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that, uh, with this one, that might be a little bit more difficult.
Well, not, not the, not the building, but just talking about the sign.
Oh, the monument.
Just the monuments, sorry.
Oh, oh, I thought you were talking about the wall sign. Yeah, yeah, I know, I think he's very open to that. We can absolutely make that a amendment. I don't think that's a question.
Yeah, cause I, I do agree with the earlier comment, that, that, that does give a, it, it gives a better lighting, um, effect to it. It doesn't over, you know, it doesn't overilluminate, um, cause that's where the problems come in. We've been finding that some of the backlit signs are, uh, to some degree, overlighting, so when you, you know, they're coming, you know, you're coming down the road, it's a little too bright.
It also looks cheap. This looks richer, looks nicer. I think he's much, one for favor of that.
Looks much classier.
Yeah, it's, it tremendously. It's a great look, so we're very open to that.
What about the two signs on one?
So there are signs existing now, so they would just be changed out? Are they the same size?
They're actually a little bit smaller, I think, on this one. This is a little bit larger. Both of them are under the, what would be a maximum hundred square feet.
But you're talking about the two signs on that one out by the road, is that, is that one of the questions?
This one here?
Yeah.
So those would each be twen, uh, it's allowed twenty-five square feet per sign face, cause it's front and back. Each one of these is twenty-five square feet, because point again, asking for two signs.
We changing the precedence then, and we open this up to everybody in town?
Not really on Route Nine. So for the building, I think that's just a change out.
That's fine.
And there are quite a few signs on Route Nine. If it was just the one sign, it might be considered large, but we have a lot of little strip malls, or small buildings of this size that have more than one business.
Right, if this, if this really was like a shopping plaza that had multiple retailers, this wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, if you remember, the last, so, one of the last signs we did on Route Nine, we had, I was just looking to see if I still had it in here, but I don't, I think I might have filed it away. But Barbara had given us a, um, uh, she had given us a list of all the signs up and down Route Nine with the, uh, uh, the approved, you know, the approved square footage and approved heights of all those signs, and, um, so it might have been for Lawrence Farms sign, that might have been the one. Because we had a lot of questions on that regarding, you know, the sign, and again, it was if they were to make it the allowable size. You know, you're talking about, you know, every sign being very small, being very, letters being very small, nobody's gonna be able to see it from a distance, so.
I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah.
Uh, the monument signs?
The signage itself.
So the signage itself inside the monument sign is nine feet by two nine, so just shy of twenty-five square.
Nine by ten, nine for wide, ten for high, yeah.
But the sign itself, because he's not including that as the base.
No, that's not, yeah, the, the base gap.
The overall monument itself is gonna be.
Right, it's still staying under the, or at the tenth foot.
Correct.
Right.
So that's really up to your discretion, as far as the monument.
So I don't know what everybody's feeling is, if wanna.
I don't see a problem with it. Route Nine's hard to see any signs sometimes, so you're gonna need all the signs you can get. But I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Good, alright, Nick, you good with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Good enough.
Alright, so, I think we have, as long as we can just change up the lighting a little bit.
Yeah, a monument sign, no problem. We'll take care of that. We'll come up with something.
Alright. Alright, so.
I just wanna clarify, the consultants can meet with the consultants to firm up the plans to expedite this.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'll let you and Pete get together and, well, I'll get you the documents if you wanna make that meeting, you might dovetail onto it.
Yeah, if you wanna move things along, I need, you know, deeds for the, the transfer of the property being swapped, easements, uh, the easement.
Those are well known, except for the legal descriptions.
And, okay, yeah, if you wanna get them to me first, I can expedite their review of those.
Sure.
And also the, uh, utility easement, the joint utility easement.
For the lighting?
Uh, there's.
Electric.
Electric, service.
That, I got to get them. That's why I thought if we met, we could just sew this all up, get it in a package that meets your approval, so that you can revise them accordingly.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that's the only open-ended issues you have that we need to address, so. Yeah, so it'd be up to you meeting with the, with staff, come up and iron out all the, all the little issues with the letters, and we can go forward from there.
With all of that being said, is the board in a position to consider an approval at the next meeting? And would you guys need to make a motion to have the resolutions drafted for the next meeting?
We could, um, maybe. How much do you guys feel needs to be addressed that could be big stumbling blocks? Is there anything that really needs to be?
All on my end?
No, not on our end. I mean, they were asking for, you know, um, several of the items to be a condition of approval anyways. Uh, meets and bounds, and talked about, you know, the lighting, so not really.
We'll sort out landscaping and we'll do lighting after, but we don't have any, we, we've sorted out everything with the signs, and that summarizes our letter.
Yeah, um, what does the board feel about that? Do you guys have any open-ended concerns with it? So if they, if we, if they, if they meet, hash out all the differences, I guess, submit the, um, you know, final plan, I guess, with all the updated information. The planner can go ahead and authorize the, uh, resolution to be written?
Providing that they, that it's all, everything is done.
Right, all the concerns that were brought up this evening get addressed.
Okay.
And put on the, and are put on the plans.
So we gotta make a motion on that?
Yeah, to authorize the planner to go ahead and write the resolution, yes, we do need to.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
At the next meeting, I would bring in the, whatever plan you work out with the consultants, as far as the landscaping, the lighting, that sign, and show them, so that before they vote, they see all the changes that are made.
Are we making a submission for that meeting, or is it gonna be based on?
So which meeting are we talking about being ready for? That's gonna be the next question. I didn't think about bringing that up, because when do you plan on meeting with the consultants? That would be the first thing. If it's gonna be in the next, you know, is it gonna, is it gonna be this week, next week, or?
We got two weeks.
I mean, I'm available, I don't know what your schedule's like, but.
I don't like to be home until ten, so, that's my curfew.
But, uh.
I mean, we could do it, I don't know, I mean, we could talk, but Friday's alright.
Just so we have, just, I mean, leave enough room, you know, so that everything can get done in a timely fashion.
Barbara, did you wanna be there?
That's all.
You wanna meet with, no? You don't need to be there, right? You're gonna get together with Al, several of them?
Yeah, as long as I can sub.
So would we be submitting revised plans, or would the, the resolution be based off of the, the plans that had been submitted, or?
I think that, that has to be a final, I believe there has to be a final plan to get a sign off, to begin with. Because that would be part of the site plan package, that had the final, you know, final plan. Even the, you know, even the, um, the lot line realignment's gonna need a, you know, it's gonna need an actual plan to be signed, you know, for approval. So, we'd need all that paperwork.
Right.
You know, for the most part, to be in place.
Okay.
So, they could do a PDF with a demonstration on board at the meeting. If you can't get it done in that time, then we'd have to move it to December seventh.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But there's no, are we responding to all the comments and submitting the eighteen copies or whatever it is? It, it, or is the resolution based off of these latest plans, and then we're bringing the revised plans to show them what we've done?
We have to have revised plans, so they can vote it on.
Yep.
I think it would have to be December seventh, just to get all the stuff, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, and, cause we need how many weeks before the meeting?
You don't, you don't need eighteen copies either.
Yeah, we don't need.
Let's constant, if you concentrate on working with staff to get this resolved.
Yeah.
Um, even if you meet the, if, if you pass the deadline for that December meeting.
Right.
Um, I think that we'll be okay, because again, this has all been hashed out. I think it's gonna be a quick, you know, overview just to make sure that all the items that needed to be addressed are, you know, are addressed.
Okay.
And then we can move forward, you know, and hopefully, everything will come together.
Sounds good.
So in the motion, you guys didn't give a date?
Yeah, I don't have anything either. Where are you coming from?
We're knowing, yeah.
We'll put it on the sixteenth, and if it's not, we can just move it to the seventh.
If it's easier.
We'll need enough time. It looks like it's gonna be December seventh, so that everyone's happy.
Yeah.
Why don't we just get concrete then, the seventh?
You wanna do that? It's, you wanna do that, or you wanna do, leave it just see if they feasibly, if they can get it done?
Yeah, I like that idea. I think that way you're just changing the date on the top of the, uh.
Just put it, you wanna put it to the seventh, everybody's good with that?
I mean, if we can get it in, it would be great, you know, if we can beat two weeks, but.
Yeah.
I don't know how that affects you guys and your inner workings with writing that.
I mean, you need a little bit of time to look at it, at least. I mean, everybody needs to just, you know, feel comfortable with it.
Just, let's do September seventh, yeah.
Seems everybody's okay with that.
Okay, so, I mean, we have everything in place, you know. Hopefully, it'll be, you know, there'll be a final approval that night, voted on, and, you know, it's cleaning out the door at that point.
What's the?
So we have, you know, everything's, you know, memorialized on paper.
I mean, I'm not saying real early.
That's the most important thing at the end of the day.
First thing in the morning.
Okay? Alright, so we're, what, we're looking, so we're looking at the December seventh meeting.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for helping us.
Okay, you're welcome.
Back here before I go to the office. In the afternoon, I'll go to the office now.
Well, what about, uh, nine o'clock Friday?
Alright, you're welcome. Have a good evening. Alright, so we've kinda melded all those three applications together.
Yep.
Alright, nine o'clock, nine o'clock Friday, here.
Got it.
Okay?
Awesome. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright.
Cause then I can come, cause then I can come right from home, too. It'd be easier for me.
Sure.
Okay, um.
Let's try the what day?
Uh, that would be the sixth.
One other discussion for this evening, but it appears, let's see. I see B has gone out to the lobby just to check, to make sure that nobody else is here.
Yeah, we don't wanna get hollered at.
And the irony that he came in complaining about noise, too, that's great.
There's nobody here for air gas? Okay. Alright, so seeing that there's nobody here for the, uh, air gas, uh, tank storage, um, I guess that we're gonna put that off to a future meeting when we hear back from the applicant. Our next item is an extension for the Cowan subdivision. Uh, they're seeking a hundred and eighty day extension on a subdivision application. The extension, if it's granted, will be beginning on November. The extension, if it's granted, will be beginning on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, and run through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So, uh, get a motion to approve the extension.
How many extensions can you ask for, infinity, or?
It used to be six months and two ninety days, but I think they lifted that, right? So as long as it's in, you have, still have to do the six months, two ninety days, and then after that, you're discharged, they're closed.
I'll make that motion. Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And this one, I believe they were pretty close to resolving their little issues, okay.
I know they, they, there's still some legal issue that, uh, Richard Cantor's working on with, so we'll get it resolved, Richard Cantor.
Okay.
How's he doing?
He just had it, his, he just had it on the backside.
All right, and then we have one miscellaneous item on the agenda also. We have our schedule for the year twenty twenty-one, um, which I believe has now been put in front of us with the corrected copy, so, um, get a mo... Okay, send out to everybody, okay. So we, um, need a motion to accept the schedule? Okay, seconded by...
Second?
Okay?
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. All right, um, do we wanna discuss something in executive session, or?
I think so.
Yeah? Just, uh, this is legal matter?
Yeah.
Regarding a project that, uh, has been in front of us?
Tonight.
Okay, so motion to go to executive session?
I'll make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just wait a minute, need to make sure, uh, Mr. Minor has turned off of the, uh...